We wanted to talk about the intergovernmental agreement with Hillsborough School District regarding school resource officers. So just to set the table a little bit, as you all know, we've been having some conversations over the past year regarding our school resource officer program. The school district has done an amazing job as they've kind of reimagined what that program will look like. They've kind of borne that responsibility of going out to the community and talking to their students and their teachers and their families about how to reimagine what that program would be. They've worked with our police department, our police department have done a great job in working with them to come to an agreement on something that they feel like will meet those needs that were expressed to the school district. The last month, the school district actually voted and unanimously approved this intergovernmental agreement. And so now it is come to the city for a city council consideration. We'll have the work session tonight. Chief Coleman is going to go through and explain kind of some of the details in the in the new IGA. And staff recommendation is that we would that the council would approve this when it comes to council consideration in two weeks as part of the city council meeting. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chief Coleman to walk you all through the new IGA.
Great. Thank you, Robbie. And Aubrey, I think we're ready for the PowerPoint. And while we're getting that up, if I could just take a moment and have a few acknowledgements before we get going, because this really has been work over a large part of the last year. And truly has been back and forth on sharing ideas and really helping the language frame both what both entities wanted to accomplish and to pay respect to the longstanding history of the program between the two parties. I'd like to acknowledge the efforts of the school district superintendent, Mike Scott, and his staff. The board of directors for the Hillsborough School District, including its student representatives, members of the Hillsborough School District community who've shared their views through several channels. Those are including surveys, public comment, and written communications to both the city and the school district. The staff at the police department that's been engaged in this work and the legal counsel for both the city and the school district who've helped us keep it in governmental borders. The intergovernmental agreement I'll be sharing with you tonight is the result of efforts to create a framework that allows this shared program to evolve at an important time and recognizes a unique relationship that's been built over many years between the two parties. My appreciation also extends to the Hillsborough City Council and its role in expressing expectations and providing guidance through these types of processes, both last November in your joint work session with the school board and again tonight with this work session. And finally, if I may, my personal thank you to the Hillsborough Police Department, school resource officers who will probably be referred to as SROs multiple times tonight. Despite a lot of uncertainty about what their future of their assignment was going to look like, they've been integral in our ability over the last year to beef up our patrol and continue to provide full service to the community through the pandemic. They bore the same risks that our other city employees did who still have public facing and public interacting jobs. They continue to do that as well as recently picking up the follow-up investigation of child welfare cases. So I appreciate them. I appreciate the patience of them, the administrators and staff at the Hillsborough School District who work with them day in and day out. And certainly, you know, the patience of the students who've also wondered, you know, what next school year is going to look like? And what probably part of that is, you know, the SRO program along with many other things. Next slide, please. Just want to give you a few fast facts about the intergovernmental agreement as proposed to the council. The effective dates would be July 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2022. It provides seven school resource officers and one sergeant in a supervisory capacity to the program. There is an additional school resource officer in the Beaverton School District that works at the high school on 185th and Walker. That is a separate situation, obviously. Hillsborough School District is to be invoiced annually in September for one of those positions, one school resource officer position. This agreement may be terminated with or without cause at any time with 180 days written notice by either party. The agreement may be terminated with cause with 30 days written notice. The parties are indemnified from the actions of each other's employees. And the agreement was voted on, as Robbie mentioned, and approved by the Hillsborough School District on April 27th, 2021. Next slide, please. The overarching goals of the program are to foster a positive school environment, climate, education. And I would say that goes both ways. And finally, we do perform a law enforcement function at the schools focused on public safety. Next slide, please. So, as you know, it's a, I think it's approximately nine to 10-page agreement. Wanted to boil down the high points and certainly can follow up on any questions you might have in certain areas, but certainly the areas that have been perhaps built out more than previous MOUs have built them out and have also taken into account a lot of the opinions and ideas that have borne themselves out over the course of the last year and leading up to this. So one of those is the selection of SROs. As currently constituted, the SRO team will stay as it was constructed before the school system closed for the pandemic, at least to in-person education. And with one change, our new sergeant is Sergeant Leland Gilbert. This will be his first year with the program, although he's been working, helping with the IGA and helping with these review of child welfare cases and setting the groundwork if ultimately the program continues. The criteria for selection of SROs are two-pronged experience as a police officer and commitment to student and community and successful performance. So number two, in particular, is not only part of the selection process, but as part of the ongoing assessment of how an SRO is doing in the assignment as they perform the duties and tasks of that. Next slide, please. A very large building out of the program revolves around training and there is a lot of interface to give you a thumbnail sketch of the IGA between the training programs that the school district offers and allowing our police officers to interface with those trainings, do them side by side or in the same environment as school district staff. And these are, these are high-level education courses that do, aren't always necessarily specifically designed for just police officers. They're designed for people that are in that education environment. So we'll have, one of the benefits of this more detailed approach to our relationship is that we'll have our resource officers learning, exchanging ideas and training side by side with the people they work with day in and day out and getting their perspectives. It won't be simply a roomful of law enforcement officers. It'll be a roomful of educators with shared goals and and hopefully shared desires for outcomes. The, the new training or the additional training to our officers is basic nationally recognized training. So training that covers responsibilities and limitations of SROs. They include child development, conflict resolution, de-escalation, which would be more specific to students and, and not only students, but situations that might be encountered in a learning environment, integrating into a positive school environment. And that is to be completed within one year of the assignment to that. So our, our continuing officers will complete that training and any person that's onboarded will take the next available. And that would be the case for most of these situations. They'll also receive annual training, the same virtual training through a resource called Safe Schools that's required for Hillsborough School District staff, including suicide prevention. I'm sorry, part of my screen is blocked out by the pictures, but conduct and child abuse training and supporting students experiencing homelessness. So as you can see, some very current issues, some issues that both unfortunately and unavoidably are a reality in, in the experience right now for the education environment. Some additional training that will be undertaken by our officers is diversity, equity, and inclusion, inclusion, anti-bias training, which is eight hours. That's in addition to that type of training, which is already being delivered by both the city and the department. Disability, autism, and some specific behavioral disorders, three hours of that training. Safety care provided by the Hillsborough School District Student Services Team. That's 16 hours the first year. And then there is an eight-hour refresher annually after that. Restorative practices, trauma-informed care, trauma-responsive care, resilience, and other similar topics, eight hours annually. And an annual Hillsborough School District home visit training, one hour, that, one hour annually. We, our SROs do accompany school district staff on home visits. This could be for a number of reasons, but to include students who have not been in school for a period of time or might be homebound or might have other issues that require just some, as you can imagine, there's, there's a proper way to approach going to a student's home and interacting with their family. Next slide, please. I wanted to point out that this isn't training that is building from a, from a zero base that our officers have a, already have a high degree of training. This training is commensurate with the responsibilities of their duties. And I would say that in, in some circumstances, it's comparable to a detective that is, as our school resource officers are considered youth services detectives. You know, a detective that might be investigating very serious crime like robberies or narcotics or sexual assaults or even homicides, where there's a high degree of training and that's combined with expertise and experience to create a well-rounded officer. So for our current eight, actually seven members, we're, we'll be replacing one of those members because of a promotion. There's approaching 20,000 hours of career training. And in the last year, I'm sorry, last five years, there's 2,500 hours of career training. Some of those topics that they've already received training in include procedural justice as, as they'll continue to get that training now in coordination with the school district. Training, again, examples, adverse childhood experiences, training, some of the for some of the most acute incidences, they have received CPR, first aid, and emergency casualty training, active shooter response training, reunification training for in the wake of a serious incident or a crisis at a high school. As I think a lot of us who have been through natural disaster and human-caused disaster training understand, understood that there's a great degree of anxiety in the wake of something like this where, where folks just don't know where their loved ones are. And part of that training is to help make that connection in a, in a way that's both organized and timely to help relieve that anxiety and get people back on track. Next slide, please. Uniforms. So there is an IGA standard, but I just wanted to share with you what our department standard is regarding police officers and school resource officers. And in a nutshell, it has to accomplish two things. Officers, we want to give them every opportunity to wear safety equipment, which would include items made of bullet-resistant materials. So that doesn't mean that it has to be worn in a certain manner. It can certainly be worn under, for instance, a polo shirt or something to that, but we, you know, we have to accommodate that safety for them. And secondly, they have to be readily identifiable as law enforcement officers. And that is particularly important in emergency situations. It's at least two-pronged, it's multi-pronged, most probably, but the two prongs that, you know, immediately come to mind is that we want people to know who the law enforcement officers are in case they need help. And so they can communicate with them and even direct them if necessary towards situations that need to be addressed. And then secondly, we want to avoid what's commonly known as a friendly fire situation. We want law enforcement officers to be readily identifiable one to another, so they don't perceive accidentally one of their peers as a threat. The standard for the IGA is that the prescribed city uniform of the day. So that would be a typical police uniform. As you see, a Hillsborough officer on patrol, including a firearm, a bullet-resistant vest. School resource officers may also wear shirts with a department logo and with an officer name displayed in prominent enough letters, so it's easily read. Duty belt, uniform pants, and footwear. Load-bearing vests are not preferred, however, our supervisor may allow for exceptions based upon the situation and what is required by Oregon state law. So just to make sure that the vernacular isn't foreign. A load-bearing vest would typically be the same as an external carrier where you might see the bullet-resistant material outside the officer's uniform. It has a uniform appearance, but it typically has some extra pockets and fasteners, so officers can carry additional equipment on it. Or, or just get equipment off their waistline and more onto their shoulders. Next slide, please. So operational procedures are obviously very important and I wanted to make as clear as possible to you in, and in reason, reasonable amount of time, the parameters with which school resource officers enforce the law. So clearly, they abide by federal, state, and local laws and ordinances. Any legal conflict in report, obviously, there are sensitive materials dealing with minors, both on the police side and on the school district side. So the IGA calls for resolution of any conflict along those lines. And certainly, you know, what we really want to avoid is improper sharing of school district information with city employees and vice versa. As you can imagine, those are strictly protected by the law and by both parties' policies and procedures. We expect that school resource officers will perform thorough investigations in an objective manner. They will be required to notify school administrators in the cases of child abuse. In particular, school resource, of course, that excludes if one of the parties is a school district employee. School resource officers are not disciplinarians. This is very important, and they do not enforce standards of student conduct that are not a violation of the law. So it's adding clarity to that, clarity if there's any misunderstanding on either side that we, in a sense, are in layman's terms, we don't enforce house rules, we enforce the law. Data collection will be a new element given through the IGA and SROs will submit monthly activity reports to the superintendent of schools and principals. That would include calls for service, delivery of presentations and lessons. The number of investigations also submit an annual list of training that they've attended. Well, one clarification I want to make here, sometimes when we talk about activity reports, there's a connotation that that means we want them out there actively enforcing the law and being proactive in law enforcement and that. The, the spirit of this is we want to see what their impact is on the schools as far as a member of the school district environment, particularly in you know, and to give us an idea how much law enforcement activity is really demands the attention of our officers. But as you'll see, you know, this includes delivery of presentations and lessons, and it's got a heavy emphasis on knowing how much training officers have gone through on both a monthly and an annual basis, a way to make sure that we stay on track and a way to correct any falling behind that might occur. And school resource officers will not take an active role in tracking student attendance. Again, to, to give you the abridged version of this, is school attendance day in and day out is a function of Hillsborough School District employees to work on that. There may be instances where there's a severe or acute situation where the school district may ask for the assistance of police when it comes to re, in regard to compulsory education laws. But those are few and far between, even before the IGA, I believe. In the most previous full school year, there were only 16 instances of that. So I don't know about you. When I was in high school, I probably had 16 on my own days that I didn't show up. So it doesn't seem to be, it seems to be a fairly small occurrence where a police officer becomes involved. And that, that isn't always on the student. That, that may involve helping the family understand what the legal obligations are for compulsory education. Next slide, please. I understand this is a long list. I'll try and just work through it quickly, but these are school district responsibilities within the IGA. A lot of them have to deal with this first one, which is to provide access to our employees, our school resource officers, to their professional development systems, access to communication systems, virtual training platforms. They each will have an office space, but I believe they already do in the comprehensive high schools. Again, training and program goal-setting, procedural safeguards, including non-law enforcement processes, policy training and adherence. So the, the school district will, as we hold our officers to the same, to the standards of policies and procedures, the school district agrees by the same token to, to do their best to train their employees and to intercede when we fall outside the bounds of what's permissible. I gather feedback from the Hillsborough School District community. I think, I want to applaud the school district. I think they've done a very robust or they've undertaken a very robust attempt to fill the, the pulse of their school district community on a number of issues. And I was extremely appreciative that they included attitudes towards school resource officers in that. It was extremely helpful in understanding where our focus needed to be. Website acknowledgements of school resource officer affiliations. That's not just a matter of public of of public relations. It's also, you know, if you, if you don't have a name to attach with maybe an incident that happened or you'd like to know who you could contact or some information, it's really important. It's, it's very difficult to keep track of a school resource officer's affiliations because they do work in the junior highs and the elementary schools as well as the high schools. So it can get to be quite, quite a complex set of attachments to schools. Translation and interpretation services, data availability when that, when that's needed. Specific training to Section C of the agreement, access to training calendar. So that will help with the scheduling. That'll help keep our folks on task as far as completing the training that's necessary. Invitations to the safety teams within schools, the climate and culture team, the care team, attendance team. That's not always, I'm sure those teams are not always looking for the law enforcement that, you know, to have an equal seat at the table. A lot of that is just awareness, awareness of what the climate and culture direction is, awareness of what the different teams are working on. It could ultimately result in the fact that a, a resource officer understands that a certain situation is better served outside of their purview and directed towards one of these teams. So that awareness factor can be really helpful in helping them understand all the tools that are available to them. A notification to Hillsborough Police Department concerning public records requests or media requests related to the agreement. So that's just an agreement that we'll will share in both directions, any kind of mutually, any kind of inquiries that are important to have mutual awareness of. Next slide, please. Just some concluding elements to the agreement. The release of student information is governed by ORS and the Family Education and Privacy Act. It's governed by Hillsborough School District policy and it's governed by Hillsborough Police Department policy. Again, information is one of the most important responsibilities we have, the guarding of it, the proper sharing of it only under the proper and lawful and only when required circumstances. So that, that is one of the key elements of the agreement. When it comes to one of the important elements of police work, which can sometimes be searches concerning lockers, vehicles, and personal, school resource officers will adhere to state law and department policy. Strip searches of students are prohibited. That's an outdated term, but that's the term used in the intergovernmental agreement. It's, I, I don't know what I would term it, but it would be an overly invasive search that required perhaps a removal of parts of clothing or something like that. So it's, those are, I don't want to give you the impression that these are things that are a part of the environment of regular law enforcement, even in regular law enforcement. That's just not the best of terms. So hey, I have something to work on for the next IGA. Physically invasive searches of students will not be initiated except under circumstances that constitute an immediate threat to students, staff, or public safety. So to be specific, that typically searches with the Hillsborough Police Department are based upon a threat matrix. And we, we try and train our officers and frankly, they do a very good job of understanding when time is on their side. So for instance, if you felt like an individual on student property, whether it's a trespasser or a student or, or a member of the staff had an illegal substance on their person, time is on your side. There's very little imminent threat to anybody under those circumstances. Versus if we will, you know, believe that a person may be in possession of a firearm on school property or there may be an imminent threat and the means to which to deliver that threat appear to be either physically visible or through some other sense, that would constitute more along the lines of an immediate danger. So we work from a, you know, when time is on our side, we're going to do proper legal procedures such as getting a search warrant and holding in place. When it's a threat, yeah, there may have to be, you know, a more specific and significant search of somebody or something. There are limits on interviews, custody, and investigations on district premises. Questions of students is limited to potential violations of the law or criminal charges. Parents and guardians should be allowed sufficient time to arrive at the school to be present unless the investigation is, I'm, I can't read the last part of that, but it's probably something to do with immediacy.
Is there a report of child abuse?
That sounds immediate. Thank you, Councilor Allen. Principals will be advised where practical, when practical, when a student is taken into custody. Restraints will only be used as a result of an investigation or immediate threat to students, staff, or public safety. So for instance, restraints don't always mean somebody's under arrest. Sometimes restraints could be used if, if we're, if we feel like there's an immediate threat and we need to ensure that no physical activity that could occur that would bring that threat to pass. That, that, we have not done this in the school district in many, many years, if ever. So I don't want you to come away with the thought that this is something that regularly happens. It's just a remote possibility that we feel needs to be addressed. Parents and guardians will be notified of a student's arrest, of a student's arrest in accordance with law and in a timely manner. The use of physical force must comply with state law and department policy. Investigations on district premises Investigations on district premises will be brought to the attention of a school administrator and follow state law and department policy. And finally, in crisis planning, the school district and and the department agree. That school resource officers participating in safety committees and and safety. Reviews of building premises and and school district activities is an important role that school resource officers play. And next slide. Okay, so I realize that that's a, that's a pretty quick run through, but. I am happy to answer any questions that you might have and I appreciate your time thus far.
Thank you, Chief. You know, I'll I'll be honest, the the thoroughness of the presentation. Didn't make it feel at all like it was a quick presentation, so thank you for this. I'm going to start with Counselor Al Care and give her the opportunity because otherwise it's hard to know without her camera. If her hand is up, so I'm gonna offer it to Counselor Al Care before we move to other other counselors to their comments. Or questions.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
I appreciate the agreement and there's a few things about it that I have questions about. Number one, are these trainings new and different? Have these always been part of the S R O program?
I I would thank you, Counselor Al Care for your question. I, there will be things that are new and different about the training. I do think that there is a lot of commonality between. The things that our officers will go through and things that they have gone through in the past. What I mentioned and what I really think will be the benefit of this is that it clearly some of it's going to be new. But it's also going to be delivered when they're in the same training setting as school district staff from a point of view of an educator. And I, in conversations with Superintendent Scott, I think that's very important that the school resource officers, they are not teachers. They're not professional educators, but they want them to as best assimilate to the environment of education. And hearing the conversations that happen in those kind of common trainings, understanding the perspective of educators. And, you know, being able to articulate in that environment, what their considerations are as school resource officers. I think that's where it's new and potentially very different.
I'm glad to hear that. One of the reasons why is that the S R Os don't have the academic background to do youth development or to teach. And so that role that they're going to play needs to be very clear. And and what they represent, I did hear you say that they're going to talk about policing, who they are, what their role is. And I think that's important, but they, I don't think they should be involved in. In the academic part of student learning. I I. I have gone back and forth in a lot of email conversation with Mike Scott about the survey that he showed. And experiences and I was glad to hear him say that that this agreement was going to be different. And I, one of the questions that I asked, and maybe you can give me your perspective of this. But he said yes, that S R Os were used in the past for discipline, but they are not going to be a part of that now. So. I guess there's a real fine line that once the S R O is getting involved with a student. That there is going to be a case, there is going to be some documentation. And the potentials there that it's going to go into a lot deeper work with an S R O. We don't know yet, right? But I guess I'd like to hear your. Your response to that.
Sure, I agree with Superintendent Scott that in the past, I I. I'm not aware of specific circumstances, but I am aware that anecdotally that. Sometimes officers and I'll just say school administrators, but that could include. Any variety of staff, including, you know, security staff and that. They worked together for many, many years and there, and there probably was an informality, if that's even a word. To their relationships that undermined that that strict guideline. That officers are only there to enforce the law. Officers, my expectation of our officers is that in a polite and constructive manner. That if they're asked to do something that does not comport with that philosophy. And those standards is to politely decline. And to to be, to understand as they do better than anybody, what in all law enforcement officers. Both abilities and and the constraints that are upon them are. And that they can help educate anybody who might ask them to do something that doesn't fall within those parameters. So this, eh, eh, an intergovernmental agreement is a, is an evolution forward between the two parties. From a, what was more of a memorandum of understanding, historically on occasion rolled over. And less formal, th- this is a message to both parties and to the people who work under this agreement. That, you know, there's a level of accountability and seriousness about how we see this interface between law enforcement and education.
Thank you, you know that the folks that are around the police station in my ward. We're doing a lot of community building, right? Between small business and Latinx and, you know, police to try to establish more trust. And and so the reason that's come about for quite a few reasons, right? But I I just want to say that I'm not saying to take away S R Os. But I am saying that folks in particular areas of our city are over policed more than others. So we have a state report that shows stops saying that. So I think that I want to be a little bit. Mindful of the fact that not everybody is going to feel good about having police in their school. And I wonder about the kids that don't want to have a relationship with the cops at school. And so how do they do that? They avoid getting into trouble, I suppose. But I I I just worry about people. And maybe it's just a new reality of schools, but that that relationship is part of their learning experience. And it just gives me some concern about it, but I I took some notes. And I appreciated that, what you talked about, what they're there to do. And that is to show students how to make good judgment, use discretion, respect other students. And a sincere concern for the well-being of the community. And I think that's great to build up with students and I think that's engaging for all students. But I. I think that there's going to be some potential for more community building with families that may not have. That same. That same experience as others. I had two questions, one. Are we going to have a monthly review or something that's timely that we would get as how things are working? Between S R Os, educators and students? And would we be tracking what kind of engagements S R Os have with students? And number two. I think I just asked this, but. You know, what, what if they don't want a relationship? With the police and who would they disclose that to? I do appreciate Jim, your work very much and the S R Os. This is not an easy job, so I'm not taking anything that you do or educators have to do for granted. But I I just want to think about youth and families a little here.
Oh, Counselor, I appreciate your questions and I don't see them as anything outside of what I would expect. I I think you're speaking for an important group of people and I'm happy to respond to that. So. And you know, it just slipped completely out of my, oh, okay, I remember what your first question was. I just want to be clear, when we say will we know on a monthly and annual basis? The we would be the the school adminis- the school principals. And Superintendent Scott and his staff and myself and my executive staff. I just wanted to make sure when you said we, it didn't include a broader group of people than that. I don't think it will be, at least right now, it is anticipated that it'll be made public. It's not that we're trying to keep it from being public, I just don't think that's the spirit of the agreement. And it would probably be. Probably wouldn't be monthly, I don't know, see why it wouldn't be made public, just. I wouldn't read it, I wouldn't read the agreement to be talking about how it would be publicly shared. I would read the agreement to to see how it is dealt with by both administrations month to month. And annually, if that makes sense.
Yeah, well, what would give us cause to not want to keep it? In your opinion, something comes up and in your opinion, we shouldn't have this agreement anymore.
Oh, the the agreement? Uh, you know, I. I I think based on, I I'm struggling to find an answer for that. I mean, there are certainly circumstances where I it, I, I don't think it would ever be my sole decision to make. To to do something like that, so I mean, it's a, it's kind of tough for me to answer that. You know, if I felt like for some reason the demands, well, for one instance. If, if for some reason, and I I have no indication of this, I'm just trying to to answer the question. If officers were told that bullet resistant materials shouldn't be worn in schools. Or if they weren't allowed to carry, you know, important equipment. Or if they weren't allowed to wear some uniform that made them identifiable, I would not feel that that was a safe environment. For police officers or H S D staff to operate under. And I would probably go through the proper channels to to first seek clarity and resolution. But then ultimately to make a decision as to whether it was advisable to continue.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and and Counselor Al Care, well, I appreciate that that question. Also, what I appreciate is the thoroughness of this whole agreement, which has really kind of addressed each of and every one of those. You know, potential breakpoints so that they have kind of been addressed in such a way that it's a win-win. You know, for for the police department and, you know, S R Os, the students in the school district. And, you know, I I I lean back onto that saying, if it's predictable, it's preventable. And and I really feel like that sort of thoughtfulness has gone into, you know, this whole agreement. And and I know I'm kind of jumping in a little sooner than I normally do. But I will tell you, you know, this, this really resonates with me and I know it does Counselor Al Care also. You know, because she too is a school administrator. And, you know, when I was a principal, when Sandy Hook happened, as absolutely, I I can tell you the lowest worst day of my life. Is, you know, is is a professional educator. And I was so grateful to have had the trainings that we had, the precautions that we had. And I apologize, Counselor Ralletto, duh, you're in the schools at this point as well. So I apologize for not making that, you know, that that statement also to include you. But, you know, the the assurance of, you know, the professionalism and the engagement. And especially the knowledge of our school, my school and my school routine, what parents were typically there. I had parents come and, you know, after that. You know, and and just seek assurance of safety. And and there's no guarantees of sa- safety, but the assurance of safety that I could provide because of the training. Was was such a, such an important component. The parents feeling like their kids could come back to school the next day. So I just want to say thank you, you know, for that. And, you know, your comment, Chief, that, you know, our S R Os don't get involved in in school discipline. And that's absolutely true because I remember once when I was, you know, doing my interim principalship at Brown. And, you know, and and I talked to the S R O and and he said, hey, that's, you know, that's, that's not within my purview. That's, that's yours, not mine. And and I think even of of S R O Emery Sousa out of Liberty. Who, you know, who saved the life of one of our kids with his, you know, with his. You know, CPR to tie back in where our council meeting. You know, so the training that they have for emergencies and and so many different things really have proved over and over again. So incredibly important on so many different levels. And I recognize and honor that my experience is different than other people's experience, whether as a parent or a student. But I'm really grateful that this agreement is so thorough, so well thought out. And really it has a- addressed some of the concerns that people had. And I, and I'm just, you know, and and I think the fact that our, the school board, you know, passed it unanimously. Really sends a very, very strong message, not only to our community, but also to us as a council. So I'm done with that, Counselor Ralletto, thank you, I know your hand was up.
Thank you so much, I'm just right off the bat, thanks for all of the information. And. I I just kind of wanted to say, I could see right off the bat what was different from even when I was last in the Hillsborough School District. At the middle school level, and so that was pretty apparent to me. Although I have not had the experience with S R Os other than summer school in the high school age group. It was good to see these points drawn out. I just have some quick clarification questions, especially for folks who may not work in the schools every day. You know, just between education speak and, you know, the department speak. Um, in Hillsborough, how are they called for service? Is it through a specific line or through non-emergency?
It can be either way, you can, there is contact, a lot of times there's contact through the security personnel at schools. So they become aware or they have contact with the officers. I do believe there's a certain level of cell phone sharing, but obviously the preferred method when we have something that we think might be. You know, require, you know, maybe more than just a minimal contact that that would go out over the radio. Some security personnel share some radio frequencies or officers carry school security radios. So, but it could have, certainly we would always encourage somebody to, in the most emergent of circumstances, to dial nine one one. Under all circumstances.
Right, okay, and then quickly, the attendance piece. You were talking about how there wasn't that responsibility, you talked about sixteen incidences. I just wanted to share that that does not usually happen until all other measures have been taken before bringing in the officers. And usually it was in the form of like last resort was like truancy court, which involved the adults more than anything. So anyone who's reading, then I just kind of wanted to make that clear that that was very, very rare. After we've shown all the different ways we tried to work with the family and and help out. Um, I was curious about the re-entry meetings, how often does that happen? Because it seems to contradict what we say about. The discipline piece, because I'm assuming it only happens if there's some sort of safety plan that somehow would. Include you guys.
Yeah, I'm not an expert on re-entry, so some of this is. You know, trying to draw upon experience and all that, but. There probably is, you know, the, when, when somebody's been out of the school. And if I'm understanding your question correctly, Counselor Ralletto, you can certainly stop me if I'm on the wrong track. There are some, you know, probably parameters that need to be discussed with a student that's re-entering. They may, you know, sometimes have a parole probation officer or there may be restrictions upon. Certain elements of the the time of day where there's supposed to be, you know, accountability. certain elements of the, the time of day where there's supposed to be, um, you know, accountability on, on where they are. And I would also point out that a lot of times it's informational for an officer, because, uh, we may have and frequently have nothing to do with, um, the circumstances that led for the student to be out of the, out of the facilities, and we, um, our awareness is beginning upon the re-entry phase.
Right, right. So that's kind of what I was thinking, it was just like if it's a student that happens to be re-entering, maybe after some sort of, juvenile department type resource or program, you know, and they're coming back to us, I think that would probably be the only instance, really. And then, kind of connected to, um, Counselor Al Care's point to, uh, students who didn't want to, um, you know, have a relationship for, or whatnot. I, I guess I just wondered how these changes, and maybe I can ask this of Superintendent Scott, is a communication plan to the students of how things are going to look different or change, or what they might expect to see? I don't know if that was part of it as well?
No, th- thank you, uh, because I, I realized as you were asking that, that I didn't catch the second part of Counselor Al Care's question. I, I do think that a lot of that is reliant upon the school district, how they choose to, um, you know, obviously, if, if there's a anxiety about interacting with police, you may, you probably wouldn't go to police to say that. So, but I do think that, um, that's probably mechanisms that will be discussed in some of the trainings that our officers will be involved in as to how that happens. And, you know, we certainly, a lot of that has to do with the selection process as well of, um, who these officers are, why we rely on experience, and, uh, why we rely on past, um, performance, is that we're looking for somebody who, um, you know, isn't going to be offended by the fact that a student, you know, might even, you know, look at them in a way that's perceived as, you know, unapproving, or something like that, that that doesn't trigger a reaction or anything like that, that these are, these are seasoned officers, um, that understand, you know, kind of those non-verbal communications. And we just simply, uh, you know, the op- my experience is that these officers, um, when chosen correctly and trained properly, um, have ways of, uh, you know, they understand when, um, they make people uncomfortable, and they don't push the issue unless it's, um, absolutely necessary under law enforcement circumstances.
Because I think it's very empowering for students to know that the presence of the school resource officers on campus from that relationship type base is a very different from them walking the beat, you know, outside of school. That's a different function. And the last thing I was just going to say was that I see this as a good opportunity for, as we're rebuilding and strengthening the SRO program, that I think ultimately you're going to see, there's going to be an opportunity to then bridge that to the next level of that relationship building, in which a lot of this anxiety and trauma doesn't always come from the schools as it does from the families' experience outside the school, which they then bring into the school, right? And then the perception of SROs. And so I'm hoping that as we kind of move along this path, that we look for those, those windows that open, those opportunities, in order to kind of take it to that, that next level, whether it be through the relationships that are built with communities or students or student leaders. Just hoping we keep that in mind. Thanks.
All right, who else would like to ask their questions? I see Counselor Martin, your, your mic is on.
I can go next. Uh, really great, great presentation, a great output at the high level. I think this IGA is a, a good step forward, and, and, you know, a good step forward. I have my notes in two spaces, and if I had planned, uh, better, I probably would have gotten them together well. But I was listening to the great questions by Counselor Al Care, uh, Ralletto, and, and you mayor. Uh, I, I think that this is something that, uh, you know, is going to be revisited every year. Uh, I don't know what our, what is our internal plan for that? Is that something we're going to have a conversation at the council level every year? What, what is our plan? Because I'm not sure I'm necessarily advocating for us revisiting it every year and discussing and modifying this, but at least having the conversation consistently about what we're doing and how we can better, uh, serve students. I'm so curious about the internal plan for that.
Chief, maybe I can, uh, take a stab at that one real quick. Um, I, I think you're right, Counselor Martin, I don't think our intent would be to have like a work session and a conversation about it every year. Um, I think it would be, um, as it is presently written, it would come back to the council for approval every year as an IGA. Same thing with the Hillsborough School District, I think it would have to be approved. But I, I think it would, it would, uh, our intent was not to actually, um, kind of rebuild it and reconsider it a- as a whole every year. It's, it's unless there's specific questions or concerns that are brought up by the council, but the school board.
And, and maybe that's a good time, if we see this every year, to potentially see the activity reports or some type of, uh, high-level summary about activity over the past year, so we can get a better idea as we're digging into that data. I think the data piece of this IGA is really going to be a, a critical next step to figure out where there are gaps in providing services and, and how we can meet those needs, but potentially using those activity reports in some way, shape, or form uh, as an, uh, to append that, uh, to the IGA that we discuss every year. Uh, I think that might be a good way to continue the conversation, but not necessarily as in-depth as this every single year. Uh, okay, uh, another, at the high level, one of the other things I hope to do, uh, I hope that we do as a city i- is work with, uh, the school district and try and figure out, you know, in a lot of the survey questions, about twenty to thirty percent of students were neutral about SROs, so they didn't agree that SROs made them safer, they didn't disagree that they made them, uh, safer. They were just neutral. I, I'd like to be able to dig in why, you know, a, almost a third, uh, at least a quarter of students for most questions felt they just didn't know, or were neutral, uh, better understanding what neutral means in that context. I, I, and, and basically what I see that is, is that next step of communication and making sure that this is a continual process uh, of communication with the school district, with the students and the parents. Um, the invitations to the parent groups, which I forget what they're called right now, uh, in, in being included in there was a, a great addition. So really grateful for all that work. I have a couple more in the weeds questions, I'm gonna, sorry. Um, one is, uh, the contract talks about, you know, for summer extended close, uh, SROs may do summer school supervision, meal box delivery training, or outreach, what do SROs do now during the summer? Uh, and how do we see that changing?
They usually, no, it's okay, they usually work with school administrators, um, to populate summer camps with, uh, students who wouldn't typically be able to, um, afford to go to a summer camp, or students who are deemed at risk by the school district for maybe, um, falling off in attendance. Um, and it's, uh, it's connecting activity, and a lot of the cases, they're run, um, out of city facilities, uh, sometimes, like the shark. And it, it spans over the course of a few weeks, and we run multiple, um, camps like that during the summer. A lot of, uh, the SROs, um, participate in a, in a, in a program we call Safety Town, which you may have heard of before, for particularly young kids, to teach them, um, you know, basically how to, how to operate safely as a kid, you know, how to, how to ride your bike, uh, how to, you know, what, uh, street signs mean, uh, what are danger signs in different circumstances and all that. Uh, that's one we, um, that isn't directly associated with the school district, um, as I recall, but it's, you know, um, one of the things that school resource officers, um, participate in. Uh, we also, um, have a, just one of, you know, one of the best things I've ever heard of. I, and I'm not tooting our horn, it happened, uh, a long time before I got here, but, um, our migrant summer camp, where, um, students who, um, who, um, maybe only spend part of the year in, in our community, or, um, their, their families aren't as well-connected to the school district or to the community, and it's an opportunity to work with those kids. And, um, uh, Della Rios, one of our school resource officers, is the champion of that from the police department perspective, and she deserves a lot of credit for kind of outside-the-box approach, and really understanding, um, both the history and the makeup of our community, and how, um, that migrant outreach, um, at least historically, has been important and, and where it's an in-road, um, as we move forward. So, um, and, and they do spend, they will spend a lot of time in training now, uh, there's, there's that much more training. And, uh, they do spend, uh, time in preparation for school years. So, um, well, uh, like maybe Counselor Ralletto and Mayor Callaway, and anybody else who's been in education can attest to that, um, that summer break is a lot shorter than most people think it is, and, uh, you, you stay longer and you start earlier. And that's kind of the same story with the school resource officers.
Okay, so then, uh, if I can kind of, so the, what we currently do, in terms of how you see that changing, you really see it as, as providing a vehicle for more training time, but in terms of activities done by the SROs, not much of a change, uh, because we're already doing outreach like the migrant camp, the safety camp, et cetera. Is that, is that right?
Uh, yes and no, and I, and it's entirely my fault, I, I kind of talked about what has happened. I do think, you know, uh, one of the ideas, and you'll see in some places in the IGA, there's room to let things evolve and develop and grow. So, I mean, we wanted to, we wanted to govern, um, how that happens, but, um, I, I would be excited to explore, you know, we can get stagnant in some of these things. They, you know, perhaps, and it's not because they haven't proven successful in the past, but you know, there, I am, I think we all desire some level of creativity and evolution as far as, you know, what we can do with students. So, I don't think it's specifically written in, Counselor, but I think the opportunity, um, is provided for within the IGA.
For sure, yeah, I was kind of curious if we had planned, but your answer shows me that, you know, we didn't necess- we don't necessarily have a plan for how things are going to change, but open to being able to make it more receptive. That's perfect. Um. Down to the bottom, just to make sure I checked off all my questions. I have one more kind of higher level statement. But. Oh, yeah, uh, the payment, the money, all, the, the money of it. That's right. Uh, so we make this school district pay about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, why did we choose that? We say it's approximately one officer, is that the high or low end of the officer? What is the reason behind us paying it? And, uh, did we consider removing that payment, uh, altogether?
I, I might punt to Robbie here. I will say this, I don't make them pay it. It's the agreement. So, uh, but no, I, if, if Robbie doesn't mind, I might punt to him, he probably knows the history better than me.
Um, actually, uh, it's been that way for a while. Uh, I don't know how we actually got to, to one. Uh, we have talked about it over the last few years, um, in fact, and we, we do think about it each year. This past year, for example, we decided not to invoice the school district, because we didn't have a school resource officer, you know, or we didn't have the program up and running since, be, because of COVID, so this was a year we chose not to invoice them. I don't know, though, uh, Counselor Martin, I can get the history for that, it's been that way for quite, quite some time. Um, I know it's a unique, uh, setup that we have, a, a lot of places, the school districts pay for it all on their own. I think that the city made a decision many years ago, uh, to, to fund the majority of that program as, as, in a partnership with the school district. But, uh, I, I don't have an answer for you as to how we landed on the one, and, and we do look at the, the, the one fifty is the, is the total cost of that officer, including benefits and everything during the year. But, uh, other than that, I'd have to get back to you on a better answer.
Well, perfect. Uh, what that shows me is, I'd love to have us even look at, uh, wh- why we, uh, have the school district pay, pay us at all, especially if it's the benefit that's provided to the community from the school resource officers. If, if it's a benefit provided to the community, it sounds to me, uh, like it's a benefit that we should fund. So that's something I, I'd love to have us look in, it, you know, maybe even in a step-down way of, you know, a couple thousand off a year, more than a couple, but you know what I mean? Uh, the, the final one I have, and, and this one is just kind of a, a twofold thing. And so it's a high level, I don't want to make you answer this, uh, chief, but it's one that I, I want to ask and see if you have a response to. And it's kind of looking at the duties of what a school resource officer does, you know, uh, the, the IGA says. It's, uh, foster a positive school environment, serve as an educational resource, provide a safe and secure learning environment, and serve as a liaison between the school and the police district. So, it's one of those where, when I read through this, there are a lot of tasks in here that if I were just looking at it from kind of an HR perspective, or a perspective of not knowing who had prior filled the position, I don't know if it's someone, I, I don't know if my first thought would be a lot of these, uh, functions would be primarily a police officer. And, and part of why I have that, and why the IGA kind of reinforces that a little bit, is I'm not questioning this policy, but one of the policies in there is the SRO will make every attempt possible when an arrest is necessary, both to not do it on school grounds, and to have a non-SRO be the arresting officer. And so those two things together to me, show me that, and it's kind of, we talked about this in our last one. It, it shows me that school resource officers do so much more that are not police-related activities. And I'm really glad to see the training in there, to make sure that, uh, uh, the folks are, are well-trained on the areas they didn't kind of, uh, have that background in previously. But, but it's one of those where the, the combination shows me, I, I hope as we move forward, we continue looking at it through the lens of how can we best provide this service? And, and looking at it from a public safety perspective, rather than just the, the police officer is the position, and then we're going to make that fit the, the needs of the contract. Um, so if, i- if, if you have a response to any of that, feel free, but I also recognize that's kind of a half-commentary and stuff. I don't want to make you, uh, you know, I don't, yeah.
Uh, I, I think it's a fair question, and, I mean, it's, this is a work session, right? So it's, uh, you know, I, I'll take a stab at it. You know, from my perspective, and I, you know, I don't, I, I, I don't even know if, you know, Superintendent Scott would share my perspective or not. It's just my thoughts on it is, the key word to all that is environment. So when we talk about why we would have a school resource officer do all those other things, is that, um, those are conducive to that school resource officer being in the education environment and in, in the facility environment. Uh, and each school has, you know, it's kind of its own culture, it's, um, to itself versus, uh, a- and they are there absolutely for law enforcement functions, and I, it would not be truthful to say that, that doesn't, you know, some of the non-disciplinary items, um, are, expand beyond what your typical officer would do. It's, I'd say that's why it's developed in that manner versus if you just, if a patrol officer responded independently and randomly based upon availability and proximity, when something happened at a school, now you're interjecting something outside the environment into the environment, it doesn't have the same knowledge, relationships, um, long-term concerns for, you know, how do we move forward from this? What happens when the student returns to school the next day? Or, or what, what, what follow-up do we need to do with the student's family? Because, you know, th- they responded to the school and something unfortunate happened, or any number of those things. So, my, um, in my mind, the key word is environment, is, is that law enforcement officer working within that environment? So it's less, in, in some ways, it could be argued, it's debatable, but I, in my mind, less intrusive, less random, less, um, less ability to follow through and, and be complete versus the officer that's there, that will be there the next day, a week, a month later, um, that, um, can operate, would, um, make it a more holistic approach, so to speak.
Thank you for that, and I really appreciate you sharing your perspective, that, that's, that's great. Uh, the, the final three, three tiny points I would say is, I want to echo Counselor Ralletto of, of, uh, that next step out into the community and those, those relationships HPD with the family. Uh, I think this IGA in general is a really great step forward, I, I think that's, that's, that's good. Um, and then one of the other things, which we didn't talk about that much tonight, but it's something that came, came up a couple times, is child welfare, welfare cases, and the relationship between HPD and, is it DHS? And kind of there's a backlog there, and, and I remember us talking about it kind of as if that backlog and us being able to serve our community needs isn't necessarily, um, the fact that we're not able to address all of our community needs isn't due to our capacity, but rather to something at the state level. If I'm not mistaken, you describing, and I could be wrong, but that's something I'd like to, uh, throw in here as well of, you know, you talked about as school resource officers, being a participant in those child ware, welfare, child abuse cases. Um, and so, so, um, that's the other piece I, I'd, I'd love to say, is if there's ways we can better work with DHS, I think that's something we, as a, as a city, need to, need to. I think that's something we as a, as a city need to, need to think about those state connections.
Yeah. We, we have mentioned in the past that there, we, there's, there's a type of, and I called them welfare. I understand that that might be a little bit too general of a term. So it's like you said, Counselor Martin, it can be anywhere from neglect to abuse. It's not, it's not a financial situation. So, which you understood. I just want to make sure other people realize I, it might not have been the best choice of words. We do have a situation where, you know, there is sometimes a disconnect where the Department of Family Services will, will deem something as what would be called an immediate response situation. And that's where police become involved, where we can't wait to have a caseworker follow up later. We, I'll, I'll just be honest, we don't always agree with them on what it is an immediate response. And sometimes I'm going to be trying to be super careful here. We, our, our perception of immediate response maybe being police officers and what we feel police officers fall in our category of immediate response isn't always mesh, doesn't always mesh with other governmental agencies. But I will say our, is our department airs on the side of, okay, you know, we'll, we'll do more work to make sure we don't miss any, don't have any fall through the cracks. And we, it's not to, I'm not using a measuring stick against other departments, but I, I will just say this. We are at the high end of taking responsibility for those types of service calls. So they do create an extraordinary burden on us because we do take more of them and, and we do have a higher standard for clearing them. So if I'm maybe understanding, maybe what the nexus is, is, you know, school district personnel are required reporters on these situations. And so when the students aren't in the class, there's obviously been a hurdle over the course of the last year as to how many of those come in and, 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 you know, we expect that, you know, we'll see what, we're going to see some sort of impact when kids get back into schools and it could be time-delayed reporting of incidences where we'll have to go back further than we typically do and things of that nature. So it will be, it'll probably be even more burdensome moving forward. But that's not a complaint. It's, you know, one of the most important things we do is to make sure that children, you know, don't become the victims of, of crime. So I, I'm not sure I answered your question. I apologize. It's, it's very, it's extremely complicated. And where it intersects with the school district is doesn't encompass all of those types of situations.
For sure. No, you answered it and thank you so much. That was really helpful.
Thanks, Counselor. Who else? Let me go check and see if anybody's hand is up.
This is Counselor Alcare.
Yes, Counselor. Thank you.
I just want to say that I, I appreciate what Anthony is saying as far as digging a little deeper into what the survey had to say and getting something more definitive from what students and families really feel about SROs. And so I just want to say that I just support that. Thanks.
Thank you. Excellent. Hey, good follow-up and thanks Anthony for that question, for those comments.
I have a comment.
Who's next? Yes.
Thank you, Chief Coleman, for your briefing tonight. And I would just like to say that in my opinion, I think the level of our involvement is too far-reaching and too in the weeds at this point. We are a city council, not a school board. And the HSD school board, they did the research and they did the outreach and they determined that they wanted SROs. And they came and we did a joint meeting and they briefed us on it. And then after that, it was a decision between what HSD wanted because they did want changes and whether or not Chief Coleman and his crew could meet those changes or not. And then that goes to Robbie and then that's it. I, I think it's cool that we asked some questions, but we have been on this call for over an hour getting into weeds that in my personal opinion, we should not be in. Not, not to this degree. So I appreciate your time, Chief, and I appreciate your time, Robbie. But if we went in the weeds this deep on every single thing that's actually not in our, in our purview, I think we'd be in big trouble. So I know people disagree with me. I'm not looking for a fight. But I just wanted to say it. Yeah. Counselor Allen, I appreciate the fists, but we go too far often. And, and frankly, I think it's insulting. So I appreciate everybody's questions. But I just want to say that, that the school board did the outreach. The school board determined what they wanted and then the chief said he could or could not meet that. That's it. The end. Thank you. Okay. So you can't say that it's insulting and then act like, well, I'm not like people, like we're asked questions as well within the purview of counsel to dictate policy and stuff, saying that it's insulting is absurd. Okay. Yes. And I expressed my opinion and you expressed yours. Thank you, Counselor Martin. I appreciate you expressing your opinion. And I you.
So this is Counselor Alcare and I, I appreciate everybody's opinions. But I'm going to say this, that not enough people were represented in the survey nor sitting on this council nor in the conversations nor working in the school to represent anybody who doesn't feel good about this. We're only hearing about why this works. And this works for a lot of people here who don't share an experience with folks where it doesn't work. And to me, that's not representative government. And, and if we didn't have to get into the weeds, we obviously wouldn't. We could go on and do other things, but I, I am concerned that we'll sign this agreement and, and not engage in conversation or not want to have data, not want to review how it's working because I don't recall approving the last agreement. I don't even know when, when it occurred. And so this is new and I think it's something that we should do because it's our SROs and we're not in education. But this is policing in schools.
Thank you, Counselor Alcare. I appreciate your opinion.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brad Bevren, Counselor Allen.
Well, I'll, I'll speak. I actually, I really like this MOU and I do remember the ones that we did in, in previous years. But I think this one is, is a lot better. Obviously the national conversation really helped drive this community conversation. And I think that the end result over this past year is something that is so much better. I think the school district did a great job of reaching out to parent groups and getting feedback and having conversations with, with the city on what could be done, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. You know, a good example of that I was highlighting here was on discipline, right? When I've talked to SROs in the past, it makes them really uncomfortable when a principal or assistant principal asks them to step in into student discipline when it's not their matter. And so I really appreciate in this agreement how it's so crystal clear and provides them that cover and not ruining, ruining that relationship maybe with that assistant principal to say, well, look, my hands are tied. Here's the agreement that it's agreed upon. And I know that there was some concerns other people raised about it. So I wanted to read that section of the MOU just so you can see how clear it is. So it says, "Parents, students, teachers and others, other school personnel should bring complaints about student misbehavior to school principal or designee rather than the SRO." "School officials should ensure that criminal student disciplinary matters remain the responsibility of school staff and not the SRO." "Enforcement of the code of student conduct is the responsibility of teachers and administrators, period." "The SRO shall refrain from being involved in the enforcement of disciplinary rules." So that is exactly what I think they should say. And I think that will help make the water less muddy for SROs in that school environment. And it's a good example of how I think this MOU and this process is working. So, you know, a year from now, the, the school district will survey more families, will survey more parents, will have more information, we're moderating the program. And I think that there's opportunities to continue to make it better. But we've made a lot of progress and, and I'm really happy with this agreement. So, thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brad Bevren.
I support the MOU. I really appreciate the presentation. Chief Coleman, can you just speak to the language skill requirement and maybe the composition of the current team that are, are the SROs in terms of, you know, the racial identity and maybe, I'm, I'm looking for progress toward reaching out to those communities that don't feel like to, that they want to engage and, and, and bridges to that in terms of finding somebody of their own that looks like them, that they can communicate with. And I, I just wonder if we have a team that can do that.
Yeah. Thank you, Counselor. I, I, I would not be able to tell you what the language skills of each individual SRO is. I do know that we have some SROs who are bilingual and bicultural. You know, they have other characteristics that, that make them, that would fit into categories we call from diversity standpoint. I also, you know, don't know their, what tools they have. You know, we certainly, school district has robust tools for communicating in, in multiple languages and all that. But what their skill level is in employing those tools, it's a great question. And to make sure if people aren't bilingual, that they're certainly, they're familiar with our tools, but maybe there are more robust set of tools that they can also, I imagine they're probably screaming right now into their phones that, you know, what those are. I just unfortunately can't take those calls right now. But I will say this, and I also want to point out that most of them do have post, that do have university educations and degrees. And some of them even have postgraduate degrees. Some of those are in child development areas, not all of them, but some of them are. So they, they're, they do know what an academic environment looks like and they, you know, you know, I think one of the, one of the things that I tend to forget sometimes too is that many of our officers, including our SROs, are also Hillsborough School District community members. So they have that investment as well. But to get to, I think the crux of your question is, again, we're broad about our selection process and that we're going to work together with the school district. And we didn't say we're going to do this for each select, we're going to, we talked about working together to decide fitting in job description. And I will tell you, you know, to be bilingual or bicultural or to have other elements of diversity can only help a candidate in the process and make them a stronger candidate to be selected. It speaks to the, the police department, you know, part of, I do believe we're seeing some really good success in, in our hiring of diverse people from backgrounds, not only police officers, but other department staff. And it's just like leadership positions. They percolate up through the organization. So I do expect we'll have more and more candidates with greater and greater diversity of backgrounds be interested in being SROs and that that will, it will happen also naturally through that process as our department becomes more diverse. You know, there's just more candidates that I can offer that to the process. So I can, I can certainly do a little bit more research and get you a more conclusive answer to the current status, but I do know I tend to underestimate what they're bringing to the table.
No, I, I just think it's important, especially to reach out to those communities that don't feel comfortable that Counselor Alclair and Ralletto and others have said. And I, I think this is a great step forward. I think it's an iterative process. You know, we're changing with the 21st century policing practices and continually upping our game. So thank you for that and your, and your staff.
I, and I could just add that, you know, certainly not all, but we're, one of the things that's helping us with our diversity is we're seeing a lot of people who grew up in Hillsborough coming back from, from other, from going to other places. And, you know, I, without divulging anything, you know, we spoke to a Hill High graduate within the last couple of months that wants to be a police officer with us and and, and he's a person with a diverse background and all that. So it's one of the great things about our city. People want to come home and some of them want to be police officers. So that, that excites me.
Thank you, Chief. Any other last questions or comments before I turn it over to Robbie to close this out? All right, Robbie, I think it's yours.
Yeah, just, just wanted to extend my thanks to Chief Coleman. I know we also have several other Hillsborough Police Department employees on the lines. Want to thank them for all their work and putting this together. It was a lot of work. Thank you. It turned out fantastic. And also just express my appreciation for the collaboration with the school district. School district continue to be great partners for us and grateful for what they do as well. Next steps, this will come to the council in two weeks for consideration. So you can expect to see it on the next meeting agenda. And that's all I've got. Thank you, Mayor.